Strowman. Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Solomon. Evans.
Drew.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation is going to be by Rajan Zed, President of the Universal Society of Hinduism, and he's going to be joining us remotely.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My hearty thanks to President Laura Armstrong, council members, and Mayor Steve Lender for scheduling me to read invocation for the great city of Rapid City. I shall be reading in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 before the Kamaera, and then interpret in English. Om. Vuhubhuvahasvahat savitavare nam. Bargo devasya dimahi yo yo na prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya, tamsoma jyotir gamya, mritiyor mamratham gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmaada saktastatham karyam karma samachara. Saktoha charan karma. Parma bhanoti purusha. Karma nevahi samsidhi massitajnkaadeya. Lokasangreha mevapi. Tampashankar tumrahasti. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navavatu, saha nobanaktu, saha vijayan karva bahai. Dejasvi navadita mastu, ma vidvisa bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samniva kuti, samnahidjani va, samnamastu omano, yata vasusa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the slide.
Now, we're on to the adoption of the agenda. Second by Nordstrom. Roll call vote, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon. Evans. Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyffenbach. Strowman. Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And for item number one tonight, we have a presentation by Mr. Lust. I see you sitting back there.
Good evening, members of the council, and thank you for allowing me to present on some of the exciting things that are happening regarding workforce housing. I'm here on behalf of the Black Hills Area Community Foundation and the Rapid City Strategic Housing Trust Fund. And let me talk to you a little bit about, we hear constantly how we have workforce housing issues in Rapid City. That is absolutely true. It's not specific to Rapid City. It's a problem that occurs throughout the country. But I have some statistics that I'd like to share specifically regarding Rapid City and the surrounding area regarding affordable housing. Affordable workforce housing somewhat become interchangeable, and I'll talk a little bit what we believe workforce housing truly entails. So you have the statistics in front of you, and these were put together by Jared McIntafer of Benchmark Data Labs. And what we have here is an analysis broken down into economic categories, and these are wages earned by households. As you can see in the first category here, the households that earn less than $20,000 per year, 83 percent of them live in unaffordable housing. And typically, the benchmark or the measurement for what's affordable is spending more than 30 percent of your income on housing. So as you can see in this lower cohort, this $20,000 and less, 83 percent live in unaffordable housing, and in fact, 57 percent of these folks pay more than half of their income on housing costs. So pretty dramatic. And it's also dramatic in the next cohort as well, those earning $20,000 to $35,000 per year. 63 percent live in unaffordable housing. 9 percent of those pay more than half of their income for housing. And then the third cohort, we traditionally consider workforce housing, are those who make, again, between $35,000 and $50,000. And as you can see here, 25 percent live in unaffordable housing. Again, they're spending more than 30 percent of their income on housing costs, and 3 percent of those are paying more than 50 percent. So we have this need, and clearly, that's going to be exacerbated by the natural growth we're seeing in our economy and our population, and that's going to be further exacerbated by what we see from the B-21 expansion. And the pressures that will exist because of that are profound. Properties that right now might be affordable are referred to as naturally occurring affordable housing. There'll be pressure on those properties to go to market, to increase their rates because there'll be that much more demand. So the existing inventory we have in affordable housing is at risk. This is a snapshot from 2018. The latest statistics available allow us only to look at 2018. But we firmly believe that the 2019, 2020, and years going forward are going to be dramatically worse due to the factors I cited, growth and expansion of the airbase. So we've got this critical need, and what are we doing to address it? What are communities around the country doing to address it? What you see oftentimes in the Midwest and other places is the creation what are called local housing trust funds. There's Minnesota, Montana, Colorado, Iowa. And the idea of a local housing trust fund in those areas is usually a department within the municipality. That department is devoted to workforce housing issues, maintaining inventory, creation of new inventory, remodels and upkeep, those type of things. What we've done here in Rapid City with the strategic housing initiative here is slightly different than what other states and communities have done, and I think it's a lot more creative and artful. Rather than having this be a department of the city of Rapid City, we've moved in a direction to keep it out of city government with, you know, significant involvement of city government. I'll get to the participation of Rapid City in a minute. But the benefit of having it be outside of the municipal government is that you can tap into charitable dollars, foundation dollars, and other resources to help in the care and concern. And frankly, you have more efficiency, more nimbleness, more flexibility than you would have if this was a municipal endeavor. So we feel, we're really excited about the nature of what we're doing. And this graphic right here, I think, is really telling. This, you know, when you hear the term affordable housing, you know, many people have a negative connotation of who benefits from affordable housing. We use the term strategic or workforce housing, and here's who we're talking about. Here's the salary ranges in this gray box and the green box. You know, this is a wide swath of our economy in Rapid City. You know, these are the hairstylists, the hospitality workers, the service providers, law enforcement, enlisted military. These are the people we're targeting to help by increasing inventory of workforce housing. These are people who are not on subsidized housing. These are people who are in our workforce right now that just need assistance. They're paying, in many cases, well in excess of 30 percent of their income for housing. So these are the people we're trying to help. And more specifically, our efforts are geared toward rental housing, not mortgage-based housing. And the reason is, the mortgage side of things is so capital-intensive, it would be very, very difficult to have a fund or raise enough money to make a meaningful difference for people looking to buy houses and to have mortgage-backed financing. Instead, multifamily housing allows us to address a larger need, a more critical need, in a much more expeditious manner. So our efforts are primarily focused on creating more multifamily affordable housing and retaining what affordable housing we do have as affordable. So, you know, the other thing, the other key point I want to emphasize is this trust fund is premised on the notion of revolving dollars. The trust fund, by and large, is not going to be making grants. This is not free money. It's going to be primarily low-interest loans, flexible money that revolves. So the money will come back into the funds when a project sells. It'll come back into the fund through interest rate payments and principal and interest payments. So it's not a giveaway. It's really just a tool to incentivize developers to get into affordable housing projects, or in many cases, to include affordable housing units or workforce units in existing market-based projects. So we have that income mix. And here's kind of a little bit of how the Strategic Housing Trust Fund came into creation. You know, many of you have participated in housing summits over the years. We've had several of them in the last five years, and those have been successful. And but what came out of that is we need to do certain things. We need to restructure, refocus. And so as a result of that, the Strategic Housing Trust Fund came to fruition. And you see some of the key players there, the Black Hills Area Community Foundation headed by Liz Hamburg, the John T. Vukuric Foundation headed by Alan Solano, Ken Young of the city of Rapid City, Barry Teis from Pennington Health and Human Services, and The other, in addition to creating the fund, getting some capital into the fund, one of the other things we've done as a group has been to recruit common bond communities out of Minneapolis to come to Rapid City. And if you go back to one of my first slides, if you look here, as far as housing units, there's a shortage of 35 housing units in the mortgage side, 1,500 in the rental side, at the $500 per month level and lower. Now, the Strategic Housing Trust Fund's efforts are not focused in that $500 per month level. You know, that's a lot of time is subsidized housing. But that's where common bond comes in. And common bonds model, and they've been very successful in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Iowa, in developing projects at that lower, very low rental rate area combined with services. So these are people who need additional assistance, not just subsidized housing, not just assistance with their rents, but kind of wraparound services. And common bond has done a wonderful job of doing that in metropolitan areas and rural areas throughout the states I mentioned. And we're very excited to have them here. They're currently looking at two projects in Rapid City to, it's kind of their entry into the market, and we're very pleased that they were willing to, you know, leapfrog, frankly, over Sioux Falls to come to South Dakota and focus their efforts in Rapid City. So here's the, you know, the long-term purpose of the, is the trust fund, is to have a sustainable source of revenue that we can entice developers into building below-market rate, rental rate projects. And you can see here who the board is for the Strategic Housing Advisory Board. It's Alan Solano's chair, Tom Weaver from First Interstate Bank, Ken Young from the city, Darren Har as a developer, Sherry Scudder from Pennington County Housing, Barry Teis from Pennington County Health and Human Services, Sarah Hansel from the city, Michelle Schulke from the city, Liz Hamburg from Black Hills Area Community Foundation, and myself. And you'll notice that the significant presence of the city through Sarah, Michelle, and Ken. And as I mentioned earlier, the traditional model for these local housing trust funds has been a city agency or department. We feel we've struck a nice balance. We have significant input and participation from the city, yet it's not a city agency. So we have, again, that flexibility to recruit philanthropic and other dollars. Because, to be honest with you, you know, what other local housing trust funds have seen in the area is a hesitance by philanthropic dollars to give to a city agency and city department. Not to cast shade upon municipal government, but, you know, I think all of us would agree that our philanthropic dollars, we would feel, would be better spent in a non-government-run agency in many respects. And so we're really targeting that balance of city involvement, yet independence from the city, to raise the significant dollars we're going to need. And that really kind of brings me to, you know, one reason I'm here is that is, you know, right now, we have about $225,000 in this fund. That's not going to make a meaningful difference at all in what we're trying to do. We need to have, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 times that to make a meaningful difference and to entice developers into that below-market rent space. Again, through a revolving, you know, flexible money process. So we're going to need financial assistance and participation from the city. And I would, I would, I would challenge Rapid City to participate actively because, frankly, in many cities, there are specific agencies and departments devoted to workforce housing. That's staff, that's department, the administration, et cetera. That's not the direction we've gone in Rapid City. That's not the direction I would ever encourage Rapid City to go. I think we fill that void very nicely, and again, very flexibly and partnered with charitable and philanthropic dollars. So, you know, we're here to ask, as you're going through budgeting, as you're thinking of Vision Fund dollars, and you hear the needs of people in workforce housing, that we fill that role, and that the city participate along with us financially so that we can make a meaningful difference long-term in workforce housing needs. Because it's going to take an effort from a lot of different levels of government and philanthropy to really make that meaningful difference. And so I would, I would challenge you, as you're, as you're thinking about workforce housing issues and what you can do, we're the vehicle for that. We have active participation from the city already through Ken, Michelle, and Sarah, and now we would like the financial participation from the city as well. So I will, I will stop there. Again, I will, I will forward this presentation to each of you tomorrow via email, so you'll have it. And I'll be available for questions currently, and then as you're going through budgeting and consideration of workforce needs, I'm always available to be contacted via email or phone call. So I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Jones.
Oh. Guess I'm the only one. I have some questions.
Darla Drew.
Okay, thank you. Just find it interesting that you stated first that, and I do like your committee, by the way, I think it's very well, it's diverse. And you want to get the money from philanthropic organizations like Vukuric. Have they, have they pledged anything yet?
Yeah, I mean, the 225,000 we have right now has come from foundations, private industry, and individuals. And frankly, we just got this thing off the ground in the last six months, really, so we're just hitting go on the fundraising efforts.
And when we're talking about the losing, low, local housing that you want for this trust fund, it's multifamily, so you're looking at apartments?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, how are you going to get the other, you have one developer on your board, Darren Har. Is he going to go out to the other developers and make presentations, or do you know how this is going to get?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to turn over every rock we can to raise money, and that means developers, that means foundations, that means individuals, high net worth individuals, city, county, state. Wherever we can, we can get dollars, we're going to be making those requests.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying at first, but I think you said that this was not a city thing, and maybe more of a state-type of effort? And then you're saying to us, we don't really want you involved, but we want you to pay for it.
I'm sorry if I miscommunicated that. The city is involved through Ken, Michelle, and Sarah, is actively engaged in the advisory board. So the city plays an active role. We get every angle from the city coming from those three individuals. Michelle heads up the CDBG grant program. So I don't want to leave, you leave the impression we don't want city's involvement. I think we're, city involvement is inherent in how we've structured this. But we want that independence from the city to be able to recruit philanthropic dollars and maintain the flexibility that you often lose through government-run programs, especially in housing at the state and federal level. Often, those dollars come with incredible restrictions and strings attached, and we're trying to avoid that and remain flexible so that we can deploy the money in a meaningful and efficient manner.
Okay, well, as you proceed, I hope that you also think about something we talked about at our last planning session, and that was green space for all these new areas that are coming in. We'd like to see areas that children can play in, families can relax in, and give it some green space and not just all concrete and homes. So that's something we'd like you to consider as you go forward, if we're going to work with you on this. And it sounds like we've already got people involved, but a lot of this has to just come back to the council. So please reach out to us if you have any, any other, like, if you have some big money come in and you want to share it with us, please let us know. Okay? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. This is very exciting, Mr. Lust. Thank you for being here tonight to talk to us about this. It's fabulous to be able to be focusing on housing and projects and positive things and not beating each other up, as has been going on for the last few months. So thank you for bringing this forward. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned about the Vision Fund, which of course would be a good, a good source for this. Would you be looking for one-time money from the Vision Fund as, to get the thing going, or an ongoing place in the Vision Fund for ongoing funding annually?
That's a, that's a great question. I appreciate that, because there have been discussions with some here and some in city government about the notion of allocating a certain percentage of Vision Funds going forward for, for housing and for this purpose. I don't know that, that certainly I personally have a position on whether one-time or ongoing funds is better, or the group certainly has. We haven't had that discussion at the board level. But really, we're at the point where, let's just get the darn thing funded so we can deploy money and get, and start getting more multifamily affordable housing built. But those are discussions certainly we would engage in, whatever, you know, the council feels would be a better fit. But one-time money is great, and the nice thing about one-time money is it's revolving here. It's not like money you give to many nonprofits where it's utilized and it's gone, and they may come back again in the future. You know, a large infusion of one-time money is going to revolve and provide some perpetuity to these funds.
Thank you. Next question. Do you plan on going to Pennington County and asking them to participate in any way?
Absolutely.
In the same manner that you're approaching us, I assume?
Certainly.
Okay. Very good. Exciting. And I, the fact that it's going to be rentals, I think, makes perfect sense, because getting the capital together to build houses for this group of folks, based on their income and based on what you showed, tremendously difficult. Now more than ever, and it's going to get harder. So this could be the stepping stone to some getting into something, a good place to be, and then being able to eventually move into homeownership if they wish. So very exciting. Thank you. I'll yield my time, Chair.
Mr. Solomon.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Lust. So the, kind of the question, I think, maybe others might be thinking, is what would you say to those who have concerns about local government participating and helping to fund housing?
Yeah, and that is, that's a legitimate concern. Should local government play any role in it? And frankly, I don't think a municipality cannot be involved in that. When you look at the cost of building that we've seen escalate dramatically in the last five years, it's just not feasible to go to a developer and say, you should build below-market rate properties without any assistance. It just, it cannot happen. There's no, there's no way in a capitalist society that would ever work without some sort of assistance or enticement to get into that space. So there has to be subsidy to build affordable workforce housing. There just has to be. And a lot of times, you see that the primary source is low-tech funding, low-income housing tax credit funding that comes from the state government. But those funds are so limited, and the number of projects and units that get built in any given year are so limited that you cannot make a meaningful dent in the need and the shortage we have without some additional subsidy. So I do think municipalities play, should play a critical role in that.
Next question is part of the work, I don't know if this group or maybe a subgroup, going to look at the kind of regulations that we might have in our local government, whether it's city or county, and things that we can do to ease the barrier and to maybe ease some of the costs that are associated, maybe with the, the cost to build that you talked about?
Well, you're in luck, because Sarah Hansel and Ken Young have been working on just such an ordinance for, well, how long has it been, Ken? Maybe a year? To, to address some of those issues, kind of the regulatory environment and what can be done to lower costs in this space and really in all building space. And I think, I don't know when that's going to be rolled out, but Sarah, Sarah just provided our advisory board the latest draft of that last week. So, so that should be coming, so stay tuned.
Good. Cutting red tapes, music to my ears. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question would be to Mr. Lust.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there a model that we can review somewhere that shows us how this works? Because I'm trying to picture in my mind how one-time infusion could be repaid when there's obviously going to be, I'm assuming investors or somebody's going to buy them through some sort of a tax-saving certificate or something to make it affordable because of the rates right now are at historic lows. I mean, anybody can go to a bank and just get a low-interest rate loan, which, those are really not significant. But what I see significant is obviously the cost of the infrastructure and the cost of the land and the building materials, and obviously, the debt service will be a factor. But somebody along the line is going to have to profit from this to make it work, I would assume, which I'm okay with all that. I just wanted to see if there was a model so I can actually get my arms around what you're trying to do. I mean, we get inundated all the time with people that think they're going to do affordable this, affordable that. You have a good crew, I know most of them on the crew. But if there was a model, I don't know if it's common bond, you said they're a little bit different than what you guys are trying to.
Yeah, they're in a, they're, they're really in a different space than, than our primary focus. But, you know, they all need some assistance as well. But, and that's a really good question about the model. And I'll get you some information about what local housing trust funds have done historically in other states. But, but again, the reason I like this model is because we have that flexibility. Maybe a developer comes to us and says, you know, 2 percent money's nice, but could you, could you amortize that over 30 years instead of 15? Because that helps us close that gap and make this project work. That's the kind of flexibility we have. Because, so, so the way I look at this is more of a, almost a banking model in a sense, is, is how flexible can we be to get a project across the finish line? We're not going to be, in virtually no instance are we going to be the sole financier of any of these projects. It's going to be, it's going to be financing that makes their margins work a little bit better and gets a little bit more affordable housing. And one thing we're considering is, in market-based projects, providing loans that, that lock up a percentage of affordable housing. So if you're building 100-unit, 100-unit complex, if we provide you this flexible financing, can you dedicate 15 of those to this affordable housing space? Again, just helps round out the financing for a market-based project, but gets us that affordable housing in a mixed-income model.
I'd just appreciate if you, like, send me something that I could read or do some research on it.
Sure.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lust and I have had a few conversations before this presentation, and I appreciate your time in explaining this to me and everything that you're being involved with, and the boards that you put together. They've got a great resume, and each and every one of them. The way I'm looking at this, council members, is that this is some, for me, this is something very similar to what we did for Elevate Rapid City and how they got started up. They started off with philanthropic money coming in, and then the city supported Elevate Rapid City. And for me, this is a similar model that we're going to be. And for me, this is a similar model that we're going to be following. And I'm also glad to hear that you've gotten, Mr. Lust, I'm also glad to hear that you've gotten Mr. McIntafer on board because I lean on him quite a bit for some data, and thank goodness he doesn't charge me yet. So he's very good at what he does. Another model, and I'm assuming you've taken a look at this, Mr. Lust, is that the National League of Cities has gotten several different programs out there, and if anybody has an opportunity to take a look at what the NLC has got on their websites, they would encourage that. Have you had that opportunity to take a look at what they've got?
Just briefly and passing, as I did research on local housing trust funds, I've looked at some of those models, but it's been a while.
Yeah, and they did have one virtual meeting over it as well, so I thought it was kind of interesting. And this, for me, it follows the same pattern, so it looks very good. And then I've got some other notes here, but that's enough for right now, and I appreciate your time. And I do want to thank you for spending the time with me to explain this model as well. And I'd appreciate your efforts going forward. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions, Mr. Lust. Thank you for being here tonight.
Very good.
Mind giving, emailing the council your contact information?
Yeah, so I'll do that tomorrow. When I send this presentation to every member, it'll have my contact information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is general public comment, three minutes per speaker. Those, all three of you know how the lights work? We'll start tonight with Rachel Caesar.
Excuse me, hello, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rachel Caesar. I live at 3418 Nicholas Court in War 3. So I just wanted to talk and support primarily for city council members who have put themselves on the line, I think, to try to keep people safe during this tough time. A lot of us have been taking COVID very seriously, either to protect our own family members, to protect family members who have to actually work outside the home and cannot protect themselves, reduce the spread. And I really do appreciate every member who has taken this seriously and has tried to encourage, you know, City of Rapid City to also take this seriously. There have been some comments and a push to, I think, Centure, a city council member, who I believe was doing her part and trying to do a very good job of encouraging people to find the businesses that they want to actually visit because those businesses are taking it seriously and, you know, those businesses are providing them the services that they're looking for. And I appreciate that effort. And I just wanted to like point out some similar examples of businesses, you know, being highlighted by the city or city council members. We talked about, you know, Elevate, I think David Lust said something about Elevate earlier. It was mentioned. It's a merger of the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Organizations. City of Rapid City is a pledged investor for Elevate at the $50,000 level, obviously you guys know this. But they have highlights in their magazines, in their YouTube channel, you know, and in other places of businesses. So the city is contributing to that. I don't see any problem with it, but it's a similar example. I've also seen city council members post public reviews and, you know, their pictures and stuff like that, you know, going to a business. And I don't have any problem with that, I just think it's a similar example. And then, you know, when I was going to church, we had business directories at churches. I don't know if city council members, you know, contribute to that. So I just wanted to point out that there are plenty of similar circumstances that a lot of other city council members might find themselves contributing to that are similar. And again, no problem with it, freedom of speech, it's all great, but I think it's important to kind of point it out. And I also have, oh, my time's up. Thank you for your, this time to speak.
Thank you, Rachel. Next up is Chuck Henry.
Six-year-old stuffed down in the Seder that night. One thing that's been in the news and I've heard talked about is the threats and vandalism against council members. Last I checked, that's against the law. So I hope that people that are doing it will get cut. Last time I was here, everybody was losing their First Amendment right, it was going to be violated by the mask mandate. Well, here's what it says. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or oppress or the right for people to assembly and petition the government." I could speak through this mask. I don't know where they're getting the First Amendment right privileges violated. And they were talking about blacklists. If people are smart enough, no, people could set up a list and put somebody else's name on it. That's how easy it is. And if the list proves to have some factual stuff on it, it's not a blacklist. Complaints, people complain, complain, complain every time they're up here. The city website has a complaint area that you can write out your complaints that you have, but you have to put your name, address, and other information they want. And there are a lot of people that won't do that. And on the housing, there's all housing, public housing or Section 8 housing, the people that live in these buildings and these apartments have to follow their lease. If they violate one part of the lease, they're out. I see that happen a lot at my building. And there's one more thing, I'll bring this up one more time. Again, if you don't like what the mayor and the city council is doing, run against them at the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Up next, Tonchi Weaver.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about due process, and this involves the 92-plus-1 complaints that the council received a couple of weeks ago. The complaints were handed in as per your code of conduct, due process. I printed it out here. This is on page two where you have due process. It goes for about four pages. Right in the very beginning, it says, "Any complaint or violation of this code shall be made in writing to the Office of the City Attorney." Basically, the way I read the occurrences since we turned those in was that the only people who have adhered to your complaint process are the people who complained. Immediately after they were scanned into record without any redaction, these records, these complaint forms were turned over to the media. Well, I guess we can't blame the media for what they're given, but it was very clear that there is certain information on these, including home addresses, that are protected information. Now, if you, all you council members have not seen it, there was a letter dated December 22nd that was then sent to Mr. Landine, the city attorney, by Arshon Tornow, who is the attorney who represented Citizens for Liberty when we first embarked on this little adventure on the mask mandate. He cited a couple of laws, the statutes here, I'll read them to you. I don't have copies for you all, but if you'll get a pencil. What was violated was 127, 1.5 subsection 5, which states that records developed or received by law enforcement agencies and other public bodies charged with the duties of investigation, which the city attorney is, or examination of persons, institutions, or businesses. Those records are, including citizen complaints, are protected records. Those records, if disclosed, this is subsection 22, records which if disclosed would constitute an unreasonable release of personal information, and subsection 23, records which if released could endanger the life or safety of any person. So I know we're all concerned about everyone's safety, and I would say that that was a very irresponsible thing to do and in itself is a violation. I would also add that since the council member that was the object of the complaints moved immediately to the last part of the due process, skipped over all the middle part, whether it was her decision or the decision of the city attorney or a combination thereof, those things are now made public. So the decision for this to be adjudicated in public has already been made. So we would expect that any hearing or any process involving these would be completely public from this point. There is also one other complaint in regard to this that has not been made public. We don't know why, but it just seems that the only thing consistent in the city's handling of these 92-plus-1 complaints is their inconsistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Tonchi. Non-public hearing items, 2 through 22. Public comment for that will open. Don't see any, so we'll close it. So on to consent items, 2 through 21. Would any of my colleagues like to remove anything? Darla Drew?
I'd like to remove item 20 and 21.
20 and 21? Anyone else? Being known, entertain a motion to approve the consent items, 2 through 19. Motion by Strowman, second by Nordstrom. Roll call vote, please.
Strowman?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Wyffenbach? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 20, approve the 2021 through 2024 Transportation Improvement Program Amendment, number 21-001.
So Patty, are you going to be handling this one then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I had a little bit of trouble when I was reading this. It's the Anamosa goes over I-90, this project, and we were going to fix that in 2023, and then the State Department of Transportation said it needs to be completely rebuilt, and therefore we backed off. And who has to pick up the rest of the bill on that then?
This is a DOT project, so they're paying for everything?
They're paying for everything. So, okay, so I didn't see any change at the end, and so I was just kind of confused about that since I'm sure it'd be a super-expensive project. So we get that gratis from the state?
Right.
Awesome.
Because it's over the interstate, this is one of their projects. They originally thought that they could just put a new overlay on it with more investigation. They actually have to replace the entire structure.
Were they going to do it all anyway? And we were never going to? Okay, all right. Thank you. I yield, I guess we need a motion.
Thank you. Entertain a motion. Motion by Nordstrom, second by Strowman. Roll call vote, please.
Lehman?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Strowman?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Wyffenbach? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 21, approve request by Atlantis LLC for a petition of de-annexation for property generally described as being located at 1314 North Elkvale Road. And Darla Drew?
Moved to approve. If I could get a second, and I'd like to hold the floor.
Motion by Drew, second by Jones.
Okay, let's see. Oh, Joel up there. So I would like some kind of an explanation on this. A de-annexation is kind of rare for us to see, and I just need some more information from you guys on how we go about this. Is it the right thing to do? You know, those kinds of questions.
This is an aerial photo of the property in question. Currently, the existing boundary for this particular parcel is this blue line here. One of the issues that has surfaced is they want to expand their Watiki Water Park, and they are requesting a de-annexation of this portion right here because the city, with the existing utilities headed along generally near the interstate, cannot come back around through Box Elder to provide services to the east side of this new structure where Box Elder already has their utilities in this location. Years ago, the city did extend the water to these parcels to accommodate the need for the utilities for both Fairfield and La Quinta. However, since that time, Box Elder has approved a couple tax increment districts to extend water and sewer to this eastern portion of the property. And we have, it does make sense from a utilities perspective to de-annex this so that Box Elder can then provide services.
So does the other portion remain on our system, or is the whole thing going to then be on the Box Elder system?
No. So we already have utilities to this portion of the property.
Okay.
It's this section right here that we have to go through Box Elder under some structures to actually get our utility extended there, if that's really what we needed to do. But Box Elder already has both water and sewer right up to the eastern portion of where their new facility is going to be located.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Anything else in the queue? The motion on the floor is to approve. Go to a roll call vote. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Landine wants to present.
Thank you. The reason I'm getting up, if you looked through the documents, there was a, one of the stipulations for the de-annexation was approval of an agreement. As I was preparing for the meeting tonight, I noticed that I could not find the agreement linked. And that was an oversight. I don't, at this point, we haven't figured out how it didn't get linked. It was probably a miscommunication. It's already been signed by the Bradskis. It's been handed out to you now. The, it's a pretty simple agreement. It just says that if we de-annex, that they will annex into Box Elder and that Box Elder agrees to provide them water and sewer. It gives the city the ability to inspect the improvements, to make sure there are no cross-connections. Kind of goes back to Alderman Drew's question about whether or not the utilities would be linked. We're still going to be providing water and sewer to part of the water park, and so we do want to make sure there's no cross-connections between the part of the existing water park and the new addition, so there aren't connections between Box Elder's system and our system. And then finally, right now, the point of sale and the sales tax for Watiki is located in Rapid City. The agreement says they will keep that in Rapid City. And those were the conditions agreed to for staff to support the de-annexation. So I think tonight, this is a pretty simple agreement. I don't think there's anybody in the public other than Box Elder or Watiki that really has an interest in it in the city. So if you feel comfortable, you could certainly approve it tonight, but since it wasn't linked, I wanted to make sure we highlighted the fact that there was an agreement and give you frankly the choice to decide whether you wanted to proceed tonight or if you wanted to continue it, to look at it for two weeks. Ultimately, I think that's up to you. I do feel comfortable with you approving it tonight, but I would leave that, again, up to you.
Thank you, Joel. Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joel, just a couple of simple questions, kind of low-priority item, but on the water utilities, when I was a city employee, one of the major issues that was utilities, when I was a city employee, one of the major issues that was a cumbersome issue, and that's the reason why I'm supporting this deannexation, was the discharge of the water from their swimming pools, and it just got to be complicated and everything that's associated with that. Have you got any information that you can share with the council about the water that's being discharged from that facility?
I mean, no, other than, I think part of the reason we're having this discussion again is because we don't have the capacity or the ability to serve the expanded area, and so Box Elder does. So that's why we, they want to expand, and our inability to handle that discharge was the reason that we're here at this solution, to make the, to allow the expansion to happen.
Very good. Yeah, because it was really complicated out there, and this will be able to help relieve some of that, some of those issues. And then the other side of it is, just for point of information, is that a lot of times we were dealing with, we used the example of one of the walls had screws into it or nails into it that belonged to the city of Rapid City, and on the other side of the wall was screws and nails that belonged to Box Elder. So this will help clarify all of that as well, so, and it clears up a lot of confusion. So I'm going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. Joel, if I may, a couple of questions for our attorney. Thank you. Who initiated this request? Was it the city, or was it Watiki, or how did it start?
It was the Bradskys, it was Watiki.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate item number nine very much, guaranteeing the sales tax revenue coming to us. That's, I believe that to be vital. I have three questions. Oh, and the final one, sorry. Will we incur any cost in this process taking place of the deannexation?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Patsy, do you anticipate anything? Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm not sure that Joel can answer this, but maybe it's the city. Do we lose any revenue from the deannexation from, and what kind of revenue are we talking
So one of the issues that may occur is the Department of Revenue determines where the point of sale actually is within the Watiki. The Bradskys have agreed that they are not going to intentionally move that point of sale to some other location so that we are not still collecting those revenues. There are some revenues that are collected through La Quinta, there are some revenues that are collected through the Fairfield, but their main office, their main location is the Rapid City entrance into the water park. The second area that they're building and expanding is really a sort of a swim-up bar. So those sales would still go to Box Elder because, you know, they're making the sale in the new facility. But generally, the Bradskys have agreed to try not to move those point of sales, but it's, in the end, the Department of Revenue's determination.
Okay, very good. I see that's point nine in the legal agreement, but just wanted to make sure that you all kind of knew what that was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. The motion on the floor is to approve. Go to a roll call vote.
Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyfembach.
Aye.
Stroman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to non-consent items. Item 22, there is a public comment period for that. Don't see anyone wants to speak, so we'll open and close it. Community development items. Approve resolution number 2020-089, a resolution to create TID, and resolution number 2020-090 to approve a project plan for property generally described as being located east of North Street, north of South Dakota Highway 44, west of Elkvale, and south of Aglin Street. We'll go to Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two motions to make here on this item, and if I may, is to make the first motion to approve item, a resolution 2020-089, creating the East Anamosa's street water main and extension for the TID-84. That'll be my first motion, and then when we get done with disposing this motion, if I get a second.
Can I get a second?
And then if I get a, and then later on, after we dispose of this motion, then I'll make a motion on the second item, if that's all right with the chair.
Should we take this motion at a time?
Yes, one at a time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wyfembach?
Point of order of the city attorney. Would this be an opportunity to divide the question? I think we lost him. Oh, he's over there. Would that be simpler, just to divide the question? I think that what Mr. Nordstrom is trying to do.
You know, I think that would be fine. I'll be honest, I'm not a parliamentarian. I mean, they do not teach parliamentary procedure in law school. Oh, I said, I'm actually not a parliamentarian. That, they don't teach that. I think that would be fine if, I think we're getting bogged down in the technicality. My understanding is that, yes, you want to split this into, one, approve the TIF creation and then handle, continue the project plan until that is prepared. So however you want to do that, I think as long as it's clear in everybody's mind what you're doing, if you want to call that dividing the question or whatever, that's, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Joel. So the motion on the floor is to approve number 2020-089, a resolution to create the TID. And that's, okay, any discussion? Go to a roll call vote.
Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyfembach.
Aye.
Stroman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Heidi, the motion was from Nordstrom, seconded from Stroman. And we'll go to Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next motion I have is to continue this resolution 2020-090, the project for, plan for East Anamosa, TID-84. Continue that to the January 19th council meeting.
And a second from Evans.
Mr. Chair, and the basis for that is that there are some issues to be worked out on the project plan, and I've spoken to, and as well as a couple of other council members, I've spoken to the developers that are interested in getting some more issues worked out on the project plan. And I think we have need to hear their concerns on that, so that's my motion, is to continue this, so we get a chance to hear from them.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This project, as we learned at the work-study session last week, is going to have an amazing impact on the development of Rapid City. It's in the right place, that being towards Elkvale and all that, by Menards and all that development area right there, which is a very exciting place to be. We all know about the development taking place at Box Elder, and it's at the right time to help prepare for the influx of people. We saw in the presentation from Mr. Lust, the need for affordable housing. The developer here on this project had everything from tiny housing to houses that are grand and of a large scale. There is room for a potential school to be built on a 40-acre plot. So there's an awful lot of very, very good things. We need to be careful that we don't over-expect the developer to pay for things that aren't his to pay for. There are several little dangling projects involved in this that the developer has agreed to pay for, parts of projects that were left undone from previous projects and things. And a good faith effort needs to be made between the city and the developer to make sure that those projects get done, and we have no loose ends at the end of this one, but we don't over-expect the developer to do this. There's nothing wrong with the developer making money on his project. I hope he does. And we, I've used a term in talking about something like this, we don't have a lot of people coming to the dance that want to build these kind of massive projects with us. And so we've got to dance with the people who come to the dance. And I very much appreciate Dream Design and the interest that they're showing in Rapid City, and I'm happy that we're going to separate these two, actually, because we do need to take a little closer look at some of these other little projects. Little, some of them are million-dollar projects, but we need to take a closer look at them to make sure that the right thing is being done with them so it works as we move forward. So I support this very much and believe it's going to be a wonderful thing for the city, and I'm glad that we separated them out. I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion on the floor is to move the item to the next council meeting. Go to a roll call vote.
Stroman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
You are the last party in the conference. You will hear silence until the conference begins.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyfembach.
Aye.
Motion carries to continue to Tuesday, January 19th.
Thank you. Public hearing items, item 23. We're going to open up, general public comment, close it. On item 23, second reading and recommendation of ordinance number 6435, an ordinance amendment to amend Chapter 17.18 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. By Stroman to approve, second by Drew. Roll call vote.
Lehman.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Stroman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Wyfembach. Motion carries.
I see Pauline pacing over there, so it must be time for the bill list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no additions to the bill list, which is small, as it usually is our first meeting in January, because it's just for this year's bills. So the total is that, which is attached at $719,520.31.
Motion by Solomon, second by Stroman. Roll call vote.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyfembach.
Aye.
Stroman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any objection to adjourning? We're done. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.